We're going to go ahead and get started here. So the purpose of tonight's town hall is to hear from Eric Henry, the president of the Meadville Area Ambulance Service, and also to hear from the City of Meadville Fire Department, International Association of Firefighters, Local 515 President Evan Cardash, on possible solutions to the current EMS crisis in the City of Meadville. Council is also here tonight. They are interested in hearing input from the public, those members that have chosen to attend. We will start by allowing Mr. Cardash to speak and provide some statements on what his proposal is, followed by Mr. Henry. At that time, council will take an opportunity to ask questions and make comments themselves before opening up the floor to the general public. Anybody who wishes to give public comment should sign in. We will do a last round of questions for anybody who has something that comes up. Speakers will be given five minutes. I do have a timer up here. I will flash a yellow card at 30 seconds and a red card when that five minutes is up. You can just stand where you're speaking. We don't have a podium or a specific microphone, so nobody has to jostle getting over everybody. With that, I will turn it over to Evan Cardash to provide his opening statements.
Thank you. And first, thank you all for being here this evening. As we're all aware, EMS is something that is on the forefront of all of our brains. We've seen in every newspaper, every article, every time you open up social media anymore, the words EMS crisis continuously kind of permeate through. And that is where our concern lies, us as the Meadville firefighters, and wanting to know what we can do to fix this EMS crisis within the City of Meadville. That is our focus of how we can make a difference, how can we do that? What we feel is the biggest problem that faces EMS is personnel, the lack of available people to respond on calls. Since 2011, our call volume alone has gone up 46%. I'm sure that sentiment is there throughout, that this is not just a problem localized to the Meadville Fire Department or the Meadville community, but that's where our focus lies, that's where we have things, that's where our data becomes in. So as our call volume continues to go up, and then we need to have more ambulances and more providers able to go ahead and do that, to have more trained staff to run on those ambulances, put those crews out, we feel is what the solution needs to be to help make that. As one of our proposals has been, and what our goal is moving forward, is to start a transport ambulance company within the City of Meadville, run underneath the umbrella of the Meadville Fire Department. By doing this, then we go ahead and can increase the number of providers available and increase the number of transportable units available, not just to us, but to the county as well, that it does help alleviate those problems moving out because there is more ambulances available. One of the big things that we have had is we've done our research and shown that how is this going to be paid for? That has been the biggest question that we've been hit with because it's a question on everyone's mind. No one wants to see a tax increase. Our proposal of operating this ambulance is the personnel would be paid for by the revenue generated from the ambulance billing, in the same way that other ambulance services around here do, such as Conde Lake Ambulance, such as a lot of these that do not do transports and use the billing strictly from emergencies to operate based on that revenue model. That is exactly what we are proposing. We do not want to have a tax increase. Nowhere and anything that we want is to add that additional tax burden, but instead want to take away the burden of knowing that if there is those ambulances available. And it's not that any one company is not maybe able to do it, it's the fact that there is that lack there. This is not saying that any ambulance is not doing well, but we want to be able to do more. We want to be able to give that service and have those ambulances available for our citizens to make sure that there is never a gap in care, that we're able to provide it, that we have that ambulance centrally located within our city to respond, and to be at 80% of the city within four minutes, and to make that difference when it comes to care. And so that is our proposal, and that's how we'd like to do it.
Okay. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Evan, for inviting me. I appreciate that. And before I start, I wanted to say one thing. The last time I sat in this room with a bunch of firemen and unionized firemen was in 2016, when the city council was going to make cuts, and I stood right over there, Mr. Joe Smock, as I won't quote you or myself, but we both spoke about the fire department and not making cuts. And so I want to say a couple of things. I'm not an anti-fire guy at all. Last week, we had a little miscommunication on my part. I probably should have called Evan and said, hey, what's going on? Because we got some response from a letter you guys sent out. And I would have rather just talked to Evan about it, because Evan's pretty good about talking to me and communicating with me. And I think at the end of the day, I want everybody to understand a few things, like this letter, which I brought this up because I had it in my file in 2016. That's the last time that they made a cut. And that was a two-in, two-out rule you guys have, and I believe that that is a rule that should be followed. I think there was a guy from Tyswell who explained to me the definition of a dead man pump, and I think that's a really scary thing to do. I don't think any fire department should have a dead man pump. I can't believe it's 2022 that people do that, but in the City of Tyswell, they put the pumping gear, and they run to the house, and then at the end, you know, they hope that the water doesn't run out or someone shows up. And there's literally, that's what they do, they both grab the hose and they hope the pump works. It's crazy. I just think it's crazy. So with that being said, I just want you to know, like, I literally support the fire department, always have. At the end of the day, I think there is a solution for the both of us. I think that Evan's right, we need to add resources to the 911 system itself, but we have to be careful about what resources we change or make available. In my business, in the ambulance world, and emergencies, non-emergencies, wheelchairs, memberships are all part of revenue. If the revenue isn't there for one part or the other, the ambulance service will have to do something different. I know that at one point Evan said, well, if it loses money, why do you guys not want to do it anymore? It's a great question. Except for any other ambulance service, it's all structured. Revenue is structured by the wheelchair, revenue is structured by non-emergencies, revenue is structured by emergencies. And at the end of the day, there are ambulances who can maintain. The 990 form for Conde Lake Ambulance is easily available online, and you can see that it's a struggling company. Madeira works for Tailoff and does a great job, but at the end of the day, an emergency-only ambulance system doesn't pay the bills. But I would say, in Evan's case, they do have highly qualified men and women at the Meadville Fire Department that work in Meadville, and we have worked with them for many years, and I certainly want to maintain that same relationship we have. And what I'm hoping for this whole process today is that we can come to some solutions, because that's all we're talking about. What I think is really important is that people need to realize, on the county level, and I am speaking on behalf of the ambulance service, but we do have an EMS and a fire commission. We're probably one of the only counties, I think, in our region that have an EMS and a fire commission. I'm very proud of both of those groups of people. In fact, they meet every other month. I think there's some members here that I see that we are part of that. The EMS commission has been focused on a few things. The call volumes have gone up by that percentage, but what they're going up from is really calls that essentially don't need an ambulance. And one of the ideas that we're working on, in fact, this week we're talking about, is lift assist. There's going to be 1,000 lift assists in Crawford County this year, which is crazy. There's a social services short gap on some calls, and I can tell you, from a county home perspective, there are nursing home bed shortages. So what's happening is people who should be in a nursing home are being sent home. And sadly, people who should have home healthcare don't have home healthcare workers, and they're relying on EMS, and they're relying on a system that is broken to fix it. And the ambulance calls we're running to rely on us to try to help that situation. At the end of the day, those calls are calls that aren't paying the bills, but they need to be handled. And so the EMS commission's job is to try and find a way to eliminate some of those needs and actually get social services intact. And one of our ideas is to run an Alpha vehicle, which would provide social services directly on that call at the same time. I think that would reduce ambulance emergencies in the city probably by 20%. And that's probably being generous, but I think that's a good start, is to reducing the need for an ambulance itself. Again, I appreciate everyone for coming today, and certainly would entertain questions from anyone.
All right. With that being said, we'll open up the floor to council for any questions or comments.
Yeah, so I just want maybe to make it clear, the impetus for this, right? At least, I think from our perspective, the way it was brought to council is because there was a proposed change to the way that ambulance service is being offered, to where it was being offered, to how it was being staffed. And can you speak specifically to that, Eric, and like the motivations for that change that was brought to our attention, right, that kind of sparked our response, like a...
Sure. And so everybody's aware, there are some people here who are aware of a half mil EMS discussion across the county. That is something that's not just across this county, but across this region. I am on the OCW West Board, and many ambulances are doing the same thing. At the end of the day, when it came to the city, I know the city's financial situation, they're in a very tough situation. It's a challenging time for any budget in any third-class city, and I would challenge the whole of you, your state legislator, who's failing you directly. At the end of the day, that's who's failing EMS. And so our goal with the fire department and through the fire system was to work a hybrid program, that the ambulances would be in your station, and you would run a hybrid system. I've actually kind of come off that a little bit, and I sent an email to Mary Ann, I think she forwarded it to the rest of you, she's shaking her head. And what I really, what I really think would be a good idea to start is to provide an ambulance to the City of Meadville and have you run the actual ambulance to the process, and we would do the billing, and you would just run the calls through that ambulance itself. At the end of the day, the risk is actually zero for you, and you actually provide another ambulance for the system. Why I did that was because I am aware, I am the head negotiator on the county for seven of the unions here, as far as the county commissioner's office goes. I get the relationship with unions and private sector. I think Jim actually warned me about this in one discussion we had about this. I agree. I think that it's a, you know, there's a union, non-union thing involved, and I think this is one of the opportunities for the City of Meadville to maybe make this collaborative work. And I will say also, and I see a guy from Tyswell here, that is actually what the City of Tyswell wants to do. I've talked to Neil, and at the end of the day, they really want some type of hybrid system where they're going to run an ambulance. I happen to sell them one, I appreciate them getting the advertising out for me. They were going to run an ambulance when emergency care is not available in Tyswell. This would be the same or very similar system, except for Tyswell kind of bought one in a need because they are in a lot different situation than Meadville is. And at the end of the day, people, I don't want to compare the two, no disrespect to emergency care in Tyswell, and I think Mr. Brown would attest, that we cover 98% of our calls here in Meadville and Meadville proper. In Tysville, there's a huge problem. There's a 90-minute wait, 60-minute wait, 30-minute wait, and the volunteer system in Tysville is taxed and no longer wants to support. So it's two different kinds of sides of the coin, but our goal is to provide you the opportunity to add resources into the system. Does that help?
It does. So just, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be clear. So on the table, there's a hybrid system where we house your ambulance in the Meadville Fire Department, or we get an ambulance?
We would provide you with the ambulance, and yeah, exactly. We would just give you the ambulance, and you guys would run it, and at the end of the day, we would do the billing and give you the revenue for it.
I would like to kind of counter with that. Yes, there is a proposal as far as that to work in a joint venture. With that joint venture, though, from how I understand it, is that Meadville ambulance would operate the first-out-do ambulance. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's what, yeah. Well, actually, to be honest with you, Evan, the logistics of that have just really been started, and so that would be something I'd certainly want to meet and talk to you about, and I think that would help.
And by doing that, but as operating the first-out-do ambulance, they are getting the majority of the revenue, which, understand, if they're operating the first out. By having a secondary backup unit, yes, it does add an additional ambulance. Well, there's multiple ambulances parked everywhere. I think you've even made the comment that there's ambulances in your driveway. It's not just the unit, it's the personnel to have there to respond. And as we sit there and talk about having this in our system, by having an additional ambulance there, yes, that is a cost part of it, but there would be less of a revenue that we could have to add an additional staff. That additional staff member makes it that we are putting that additional person into the system. By currently having that and making it that we are operating on the same number of ambulances, or then trying to take other providers out. We still, as the Meadville Fire Department, have to focus also on our fire protection duties. We are trying to become more widespread as far as what emergencies we are able to handle, emergency medical services being one of them. As he talks about lift assists, that, yes, they're non-built. We currently handle 300 of the 1,000 lift assists in the county at no cost. We're already doing that. It's not a burden to the ambulance in the city. That is something the fire department is already doing. And so as we see that we're already taking some of that to try to take away those calls and make sure it's there, and if we can add that additional personnel and use that revenue to pay for that personnel, it's there. Because as we talk, there is a half mil potential out there. And I don't think that's been put to the city, as he said, that we're leaving that part out, but that's for this year. When do we go that all of a sudden that half mil burden does become on the city? And if I recall correctly, on October 31st at East Mead, there was talks with state legislators about taking the half mil and increasing it to one and a half. And so how long are we going to sit and worry that now a half mil becomes one and a half mil, when we could have been operating a system that also provided the high level of care at no tax burden to the citizens? And so that's kind of where some of ours comes in, is I don't want any burden financially on council, on businesses, on residents, and if we can do that while providing additional people to respond and additional trained personnel, it kind of seems like a win-win, and that's where we're kind of coming from with some of that.
Evan, you mentioned, and tell me if I heard this correctly, that the fire department already does all of the lift assists, or most of them?
Currently, yes. And honestly, that comes a lot from the strain on the EMS system, that as you stated, that's not false, that there was an inundated number of calls for lift assists. And so it became out that the fire departments were to step up and do it. We are there for the protection of our citizens as a municipality. We gladly did that. We serve our citizens. And as it was put out there, and it's even been said before, that every municipality is responsible for fire and EMS within their jurisdiction. So we're gladly able to do that, and we're gladly able to do whatever is there. And so taking on that additional front of just adding the transport service to it, that we're already going and trying to help with what we can with manpower and staffing by providing QRS services on EMS-level calls. We're trying to help when crews are at level zero and make sure we can provide additional personnel or respond as there's that turnaround from the hospital. And so we're doing what we can by adding one additional component of it, that we may be able to increase the overall success of our system without worrying about the tax burden that could come with it.
Can you tell me how many calls that the fire department goes on now, right? We see the fire truck go out when there's an emergency call, like...
Correct.
So how many do you go out, and why is the fire department going out anyway, right? Like, so if you could explain that?
So currently, we're going to be on pace for about 1,800 calls this year for total emergencies. In 2011, I can pull up the numbers, but it was roughly 1,200 calls. We're a greater increase from that overall. Of that, our EMS calls alone this year between the lift assists and EMS responses, and that's where we're going with the ALS and not really the BLS level currently with our QRS, is going to be about 1,300 calls. And so of that, you know, 74% of last year of our calls were related to some form of emergency medical care, whether it was lift assist and just the patient assist category, or whether it was going and trying to provide first aid, do what we could to assist the ambulance. The ambulance providers do a fantastic job doing it. I don't want to make it sound like they don't, but trying to allow them to assist there, you know, they are running for multiple calls sometimes, so our service is able to get there and try to provide that a little quicker. When they are inundated with these emergencies, provide them with that additional manpower when needed, and trying to give that high level of care that we can in the quickest form possible. That is where our biggest thing comes in, is when we've looked at all the statistical data out there, you know, we start seeing cardiac death and everything else, our ability to get anywhere within the city at four minutes, you know, 80% of the city can be covered, and at six minutes, I believe, for the remaining 20%, that's huge for us. And that's where we want to make sure by being centrally located, you know, to keep going out that way.
So, and I apologize. Just to be clear, you're on 74% of all emergency calls anyway?
We are, so we are running the ALS, which is Advanced Level Care, which normally gets a paramedic. We are responding on those as part of our EMS, and it's set up with the EMD system at the county. So we currently respond on those, we respond on lift assists, and then all fire rescue-related things. So as far as how many, I believe when we ran the numbers, there was 2,200 calls for service within the city last year for Meadville ambulance, you know, so taking out some of the ones for the contracted places or anything like that, you know, there's roughly of the 2,000 calls, you know, we're going on 1,300 of them currently as it sits with our current system.
How would it work if we had a municipally funded or provided ambulance service, and we have someone in need who's on the wrong side of the street? I'm thinking, for example, Glenwood Avenue, literally, that's a city line. How do you handle that?
Well, I think first, that comes into the talks that whether city management and administration or council has to have with those other municipalities, having those agreements in place. As we are looking at potentially doing a new type of service, then we would have to go out and create those agreements, and whether it is, are we getting funds back from that when we go there? You know, are they paying us a price per call? Kind of the same thing that is already being done, I think by Meadville ambulance is saying, hey, let's talk about this, let's talk about if you want me to respond to your municipality, what is it going to take? What are we going to do to get there? I think that's the same thing that we're having this discussion at, is if we want Meadville ambulance to respond in, here's some of the stuff. And, you know, that's obviously more than Eric can talk about that way, but how I understand it, is you're going to the municipality, you are making that agreement, and if they don't want you in, if they're not having that agreement, that that's where some of that comes in. I believe there's systems in place to the north of us that kind of run that, where they needed to have those agreements within municipalities that gave them the okay to go out. But again, I want to kind of stress that my goal is not to take anything from anybody and not to go out and take calls from other municipalities. If there's contracts that are set up, buy Meadville ambulance to function in West Mead on the other side of Glenwood, then okay, then that's the service that West Mead wanted to go with, and that's the service that Meadville ambulance is providing as part of their contract that they signed earlier this month and how to provide that. And so with us, it becomes the focus on the City of Meadville, and only when we talk about our backup and mutual aid agreements, when the system is inundated, of how we would go out and pursue that. And that's only just to back up the current system if they didn't have anyone available.
I'd just like to add, so the numbers are, it's pretty close, the numbers of 2,000 total calls. If you take contractual calls out, and you take out the patient, no treats, no transports, dry runs, things like that, you're well into the 1,200, 1,100 range. I've been the EMS owner here for 20 years, I've been a paramedic for 30. At the end of the day, EMS math is the same, whether it's Meadville Fire Department, Meadville Ambulance Service, Emergency Care, Tyswell Fire Department, every ambulance, one 24-hour ambulance, if you don't run 1,850 calls transported, you'll lose money. It doesn't matter who you are. I can, and I will share this with you guys in regards to the finances, I have 20 years of finances to show that. It's what the problem is, and that's why the EMS commission is looking for alternative funding. It shouldn't be, and I am a no-tax guy, because it really shouldn't be a municipal issue when it comes to property tax. It should be, it should come down to a user fee or some other able-bodied way to pay for EMS. That's why it matters, because it doesn't matter if Meadville Central does it, it doesn't matter if Meadville ambulance does it, if you don't do 1,850 transportable calls every year, you will lose money. That's just the industry standard. The actual price to run a 24-hour ambulance is between $800,000 and $900,000 a year out the door. And those numbers don't work when Medicaid reimburses you at one-fourth the cost, Medicare reimburses you at one-third the cost, and it's a travesty that state legislators attach their CPI to their salaries but not to Medicaid and Medicare. I mean, Medicare is a federal thing, and the federal legislators every year get an increase, Medicaid, same thing. That is a stagnant number. Twice in 25 years, Medicaid has been increased, twice. And those are the folks who are using a system that need the help and the support, and at the end of the day, the bill just doesn't cover it. And so it doesn't matter what Evan says or I say about numbers, those are just the facts. I mean, there's a list, and I provided this to you, I think you guys, here's a list of 30 towns the same size as Meadville in Pennsylvania, 30 towns, two of them have an ambulance, less than 1% of them run an ambulance, because at the end of the day, it costs money to run a service at a size of 13,000. That's why West Mead and the Vernons and the extra transports and the wheelchairs come to fruition. We've done really well until the last two years, because two things, inflation, right, the inflationary costs and wages, because we've had to increase our wages due to post-COVID wage increases. That's what we've done, and every ambulance is in the same boat. And I think what people need to understand is, that's the idea of the EMS commission. There's an opportunity in Crawford County for an EMS commission to make huge, huge changes. It might be a county-level change, it might be a state-level change, and to be honest with you, I think at the end of the day, I think there actually is an opportunity for the City of Meadville to run an emergency ambulance service. And people might hear, they go, wow, why is Eric saying that? Because that's exactly what probably should happen, but it needs to be funded properly. The for-profit ambulance model, we've been here since 1958. We have never charged the City of Meadville a dollar to actually have to cover the municipality, even though that is in the law. And so for me, 20 years later, I'm just trying to find a solution. I'm at the end of the rope of trying to talk to legislators and say, listen, you're creating this mess, you're forcing people to do work at less than what it costs to do it, and it doesn't matter who you are. If you do that, no matter what town, what county, what state you're in, you will still lose money on EMS. I know Evan said, and I'm curious, just for numbers, did you want to add four people, three people? What were you thinking when you were talking about your system? I'm just curious.
As we talk about it, it's four paramedics is what we would like to add, and using that would staff our daily plus give the extra to cover. We would then be using our other paramedics that we are now have on staff, continue to try to send people to, as well as then use the current staff we have. A lot of what, when we listened to all these town hall meetings, was that the half mil was to provide a state of readiness. The Meadville Fire Department has been in a state of readiness since 1838, and the tax money that is paid every year to fund that is where that goes to. By using those personnel that are responding on EMS calls currently, and using one of those to cross-staff, not only are we able to staff the ambulance and take those numbers, which the $800,000 for staffing, I know I've talked to some of our finance here, even to put seven on for our staffing stuff, doesn't equal that, but I digress.
No, no, 800 is what it takes to run one ambulance completely. It doesn't mean it's a number for payroll, it means like everything, total, insurances, everything, that's what I mean. I'm sorry to clarify.
And again, some of that same stuff we are having and we currently run because we do run a QRS system. We are replacing supplies, we are running on fuel, we are opening up on all the little things, you know, of how much heat is leaving a station, how much energy is we putting when the garage doors go up, where that's already being used. And so to get back kind of to some of it, that yes, if we're looking to put four paramedics on to be able to add that and then use in conjunction with our part-time staffing and our current full-time staffing to cross-staff. And one of the benefits for that, if not only are we able to do that and work for that, but that also adds us the ability to go ahead and reach those higher levels, because now we'd be putting the fourth person on with our part timer and everything, adding that other person gets an additional, and so now we're also meeting more of those things.
So I'm going to ask you a question, and so you'd have four guys on a shift? Is that what you're saying? You'd have four guys, including the paramedic, or five?
Five, including the paramedic.
So the fifth would be that the part-time, the three number would actually be four, right? You'd actually make sure there's always four and then five?
Yes.
So there's actually adding the extra hours for the time? I'm just trying to get the math down, because my next question is, would you want to have one ambulance or two ambulances?
So one ambulance would be the one going out, the backup one would be in case if we need anything for mechanical failures, anything like that, or if we do need to run it.
And if you're on a call, who would be your backup?
Well, currently, I guess some of our same system would be the same way that at times Meadville ambulance runs, is the drop-and-go system. The benefit being the same way that we respond to QRS calls while Meadville ambulance is clearing, that now they could be going, starting advanced-level care with paramedics that would be assigned to the fire engine, to the QRS squad, and having no delay in care, is then when we go there, that person jumps on the ambulance, and we're doing the same system moving forward. Not only could we still be able to do the other proof we needed to run in, but again, if we're talking about backup calls, it's the same thing that functions anyway.
I appreciate it. So, and then one other question, because I think it's important. So if you have five guys on, and you're running the ambulance call, and you're on Spring Street, the third floor cardiac arrest, right? You're three, there's three of you left, right? So in 2017, in this article that was quoted, also Lieutenant Smock was quoted in too, is the two-in, two-out rule still a good idea, or is it something we should try to work on to make sure there's still four guys? You only have three guys available then.
Yeah.
So you would have to run the emergency, the fire with three guys? So you would have to run the emergency, the fire with three guys?
We run the fire with three guys now.
Well, I agree, I'm trying to talk to you in four, so I mean, I think that's important.
Exactly, but that's just it.
I think we're, we need to get back to the.
Oh, you're okay, you know, we're doing good, we're fine.
So council, back to you, if you have any other questions or comments.
I do have one more question. So if we had, just, and work with me, my mind works in spirals, yes, in mysterious ways. So in what you're, Eric, you're saying is that we would have an ambulance, right?
Correct.
And we would run it?
Correct.
So we would need to hire more people anyway, to run that ambulance, correct?
Well, it would be, it would be a backup system, it's what it would be like it is now. They're talking about the same similar idea. We handle 98% of the calls, there'd be a time we would need it, but it wouldn't be every day, I wouldn't think so.
So then, well, I'm just, again, I'm just trying to run through it. So if in that case, we would still need more people, because if there was a fire and we're running that, we would still need to staff more people, right? We would still need to hire more people? Is that what you, I mean, if that happened, and this is in this case?
And 98% of the calls, I would think, it would happen occasionally as a backup system that would work, they would still run, they would run everything else that normally they do, but there's a day like, hey, we're out, you know, notify, you know, the department that we're out for a long time, and they can engage and run the calls, and instead of running the QRS truck, they would actually run the ambulance out the door and handle. That's just, again, this is so raw in regards to, I'd rather sit and talk to Evan how it would work or wouldn't work, and maybe at the end of the day, we don't agree, and that's fine too, but it's an operational question that we'd have to really.
Truly, truly, again, I was just trying to figure that out. To, so we, ultimately, we would have to call somebody in if we had, if we were running that backup, and we had a fire, then we'd have to call in for some, maybe some overtime?
Yeah, and in essence, it's what we do now. Anytime we have a fire, due to the fact that we currently don't meet our staffing for NFPA 1710.
Right.
We're immediately calling back and recalling our personnel that are off-duty. That's been standard procedure for decades that we ran for that. And so it'd be the same thing that happens, we potentially could have more available when it's there, because it is first emergency out. And we are calling the Meadville ambulance to be our rehab unit and our medical unit on scene now. And so they're already responding to our fire call, us having our own ambulance would do the exact same thing and kind of have that same system, but now we have that. And so where it comes back to, yes, that we could have to run the second call, well, we could have to run a second call the same way for him or us, and so that part kind of becomes secondary in my opinion, but the big part where I see is that with ours, we still are adding people and available units into the system, where the current, the current proposal that's out there is Meadville ambulance running under the same general functions that they do now, trying to cover all of that, and then we're covering the backup on that, you know, 2% that he's saying, which means that if we had our unit, that then it could cover the same way, create more availability everywhere, and our backup unit could still be covering the 2% all the same with having to do that.
I guess that's what I'm ultimately asking, is it would be best to, regardless, we probably need to hire somebody else. And that's, you know, that's all I was getting at, we probably need to hire one or two other people on our, in our fire department, whether we ran this, his ambulance, or we ran our own.
How we have talked about it, looked at it, yes. And that is where if we talk about needing to potentially hire to make that possible, that how can we do that? By offsetting costs via the revenue coming in on that consistent basis.
Okay, I, thank you.
For the record, Evan, you and I talked about this, and to staff two people on one bus per year, 24/7, 24/48 configuration would be about six and a half people, is that correct?
Yeah, if you went off of the, to cover for overtimes and everything else, and if you were putting that as all-new people on there, and the current firefighters not moving roles, cross-staffing, anything that way, it would be seven people. Six would be your primary, and then there is, the actual factor to cover into it is 0.67%, and so then it would round up to another, and that is if you were hiring all-new staff for that. Where we would be looking at trying to get three in and using the fourth to rotate through and cover that on the paramedic side, using our current providers, current staffing, current level to operate as an EMT in the same way.
And without, in a facility transport, the service would lose money?
I don't think it would lose money. There is nothing to say that it would lose money, because first of all, places operate on it. He said Conient Lake barely gets by. They get by. These places are getting by. I'm not here to operate a business and run a profit. I admit that, I am here for the people. If I can provide a way that we are giving a service that's there, I might not make money, but if I cannot lose money and we can provide a higher level of care, then that's what it is.
I can appreciate that, but I will absolutely share with you guys, every year of every revenue of Meadville ambulance for the last 20 years, it just, it doesn't add up to the same. I mean, I'm just, just in full disclosure, like going through the fiscal report today from our billing company, I would gladly look at, only because I, again, it just, the numbers don't change. You know, I think Evan and I can find some common ground, what we can do here, and I think we need to. We might have the ability to come some hybrid that doesn't, that I don't like, and maybe initially he doesn't like, but we find something, some common ground, but at the end of the day, if you're going to run your own ambulance, and you're going to run your ambulances, you will lose money. You will lose money running ambulance service at that volume. The only way, and again, Conient Lake runs about 1,600 calls, just barely above, a lot of their assists, all you got to do is look at 994, Madera works her tail off and she does the best thing she can do, but at the end of the day, I don't make those numbers up. Those numbers come from insurance, that's exactly what it is. It's payer mix. I think when I met with you guys, and I have actually, I want to talk about payer mix, because that's the most important thing, when you own an ambulance service or run an ambulance service or budget an ambulance service. It's 50% Medicare, so one-fourth is a loss, or, I'm sorry, one-fourth is, one-third is a loss. 16% Medicaid, so 66%, 17% non-billable, 7% private, 9% commercial, this is the payer mix for 1,6335, and that, what that should tell you folks is, that's actually a little better, because that includes anything in that zip code. It's lower, those numbers are worse in just the city of Meadville. I mean, this billing company I have, I've had for 20 years, and this is exactly what we do. And so I think that what we probably can understand is, there's a reason why 30 departments, 30 towns don't do this, it's just, it's a tough business, and it's really tough right now. That's why I'm hoping the EMS commission can find some stuff, and I agree with Evan, the legislator said, how about two and a half mils for EMS? I think that's nuts, I think it's crazy. I think what they should say is, how about paying us for the service we provide? How about not giving us another unfunded mandate? Because that's what Medicaid and Medicare ambulance trips are. They make you do the trips, but they don't want to pay for, and they should pay you for those trips. Those numbers just, they're just, they're just there. I mean, you guys can see them, I would gladly share them with you, I think you need to see them. Because a number from anybody else is just a number, a number from a billing company who does it for a living is just what they do.
And I, I mean, I agree, you're right, there is billing, but where it looks, it's that revenue per call, and where we're looking at what to get and how much it's going to cost to bring that in. And I think some of this, this isn't to sound rude, and I apologize if it is, but if it loses money and we don't have anything, then why are you doing it? Then why are you upset with some of it?
But that's the same, that's the same answer is, in ambulance service, can, if I just run emergencies in City Meadville, I will lose money, be out of business. If I can do wheelchairs, non-emergency service, and transports, I make enough money to pay my people. The last two years, I've not made any money at all, probably this year, not going to make any money at all, but at the end of the day, it's a combination of all those things that make an ambulance somewhat solvent. If you just run emergencies, ambulance our size, we will not be in business, we will lose money. In fact, I think I've talked to the city manager, and I've talked to city council, this is, I am not interested in running an emergency-only business, I can't, I would be out of business. And if the city wants to run all the emergencies and they want to have their own ambulance service, then I will retool my ambulance service and we'll do something different. And even with municipal assistance of one-half of a mil, I got to be honest with you, it doesn't scratch the surface. Those municipalities I cover now doesn't scratch the surface when it comes to what the shortfall of Medicaid and Medicare are. And I think that's what's really important is, I think we can agree that the ambulances are woefully underfunded, and I appreciate you trying to find solutions like we are, but at the end of the day, whether you do it or I do it, emergency services in the ambulance business is a losing proposition. And I would just like to add one other thing, because I think it's important, it doesn't matter the size of the ambulance. In Youngstown, Ohio, 60,000 people, they just did a contract with a private ambulance, EMT ambulance, for $4 million. $4 million over four years, I'm sorry, over three years, because when they did an analysis, they would lose money. 60,000 people in Youngstown, they would lose money because of it. That's why municipalities are no different. And to be honest with you, and I appreciate the paramedic wages, Evan can remember, when he worked for me, it was terrible, I mean, I made $5 an hour when I first started as a paramedic, I think when he worked for me, it was 13. Paramedic wages have gone up, it's great. Union wages and union costs are higher than what private pay is, so your cost per hour for, to run the services is higher than a private service. And so those numbers I show you are actually a little higher with what your expenses are. And I think that's where these numbers are going to be a little skewed.
Well, and I think some of that as well, where you're talking the cost that it is, maybe that is what the cost is, we're taking that in half, that we're trying to add four instead of the eight that we talked about adding to that. And if you're bringing up places in Ohio, Brookfield, Ohio, in Tremble County just outside, with a very poor payer mixes, averaging $279 average per call revenue on the year. And so when you take that, and we look at what those call numbers are and start breaking it down, that we are able to start to make that, that we can cover those four people.
And funded by taxpayers in Brookfield, you know who knows, they're funded by taxes, and all those, all those regional areas in Brookfield, they're good for that, the Brookfield fire, all the ones around them actually have township millage and that helps, but the township payer mix is much different than the city of Meadville, it just is. I mean, Vernon, West Mead, the payer mixes are different. And unfortunately, that's what the problem is. And I just can't stress enough how important payer mix is, it's just important.
And I understand that, but we talk about, you know, you brought up a couple of times that we're not getting paid the same, and it needs to be addressed at the state level, correct, but I'm worried about what our citizens need here now. Yes, maybe there is an issue that needs there, but what can I do to make sure that someone calling at any street within the city is going to be covered adequately and that there's an ambulance to respond, and how can we do that? As we talk about this, that there's decreasing payer mixes out there, which means you can't provide, not that you can't provide, that it's harder for you to provide ambulances to cover all these areas, as the call numbers keep going up, which means you're stretched thinner. I understand that, I feel that 100%. So if you're being stretched thinner and can use that less, then how can we step in and make sure the citizens of Meadville are protected in perpetuity? And that's kind of where, by doing this and having revenue that can support that, to make sure that that's in, by not going in with eight people and going in with four?
We're going to get back to some questions.
I could question too. My last question would be, I feel like I know, I understand Evan, your why, but I would like to hear you, I'm missing that from you. Eric, I'm missing, I'm just hearing numbers, 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 so I don't feel like, I honestly don't feel like I trust you because of that, because I'm missing the human element, you know, you've just been talking very quickly about numbers. And what I need to know is like, why would I trust, why would I trust you, you know, you know, I feel like he's talked about citizens and care and response, and so I would really appreciate if you would talk about, why should we use your service?
Well, since 1958, we've done the service here, and for 20 years I've owned the service, we've done it here, and I think we've done a good job. We have great paramedics, we've done, we provided great care, we handled 98% of the calls, we have a quality assurance program with the medical director, you can look at all the reviews we have with that, they've done a really wonderful job when it comes to it. I mean, at the end of the day, we're providing a source to the city at no cost, up until we talk about this current situation.
Can I ask you real quick, why is that important to you? Why is that important? Like, you're saying experience, but like, I'm still missing the heart of it? Does that, I mean, because you can have consistency and experience and maybe be doing an okay job, you know? Like, I guess I'm just still missing, like, at the underneath of it? If you could just go with it, does that?
I mean, I think you might want to take some time to talk to the employees we have, which are good employees and worked hard, been here, a lot have been here for a long time, and they rotate through. I think at the end of the day, our service has been providing the service and doing a decent job of doing it, and I think that we care about our citizens, anybody in EMS or fire, both, we both care about what we do, it's not a job that people do for money, it's not a job that people do because they have to, they really want to, they can go other places and make more, make more money or, and be in a less stressful environment. They just, they're just the people who care about EMS. And I think that, I mean, it's, to me, it's a little bit strange, because I think I've talked to you about this a little bit in regards to what we do, the service has just been here to do that. And at the end of the day, even on the county level, and our goal of the EMS commission is to solve this problem and find revenue, because what will happen is, if you run your own ambulance service, you're going to lose money. And there's just no way around that. It doesn't mean it's wrong either, I mean, I agree with Evan, if the city of Meadville wants to run the ambulance service and you guys want to do that and run the trucks, then you should do that. You really should. If it's about what you need, you think is best for your citizens, you should do that, you should run your own ambulance service. But at the end of the day, I just want to tell you, the numbers are the numbers. And I talk numbers because as a business owner, I have to make sure people are paid. And if people, and you guys, your ability to do that is to raise taxes, and this millage for me on the private, on the private side is different. You know, and there's township supervisors here who I know who have said, you know, this is crazy. But at the end of the day, the law, the law requires municipalities to do it, so maybe if that's what you think you need to do, I think that maybe you guys should consider, but I'm just telling you, it is not going to be, it's not going to be a good financial number. If that's okay with you guys, that's what you really want to do, I will accept it, I just, I can't run a system like that. I can't, you can't take, if you take 2,000 emergencies away from Meadville ambulance, and you said, you know, you guys don't want to take things away, if you take those 2,000 calls away, 1,300 transportable, I just told you what it costs, we're going to run less staff, we're going to do something different, we're not going to be available, it's going to put you into a two-ambulance system, maybe a three-ambulance system, if you have to do that. And I think that's where people have to understand, I just, I can't not do what we're doing now. If we change our system, if we take away any part of a very fragile budget, like we have right now, just like the city, we will not survive. And so if that is your, if that is your passion to run an ambulance service and you want to use the fire department, that's what, you're a city council, you can decide to do that. I just want to tell you, I cannot, I can't be a, when you need me, ambulance service. My people have to have a holistic approach to calls, I mean, we have to handle transports and wheelchairs and emergencies, or we'll do something different. And that might mean that we run one 24-hour truck, we might run, you know, one and a half. I mean, if those calls go away, Meadville ambulance service will have to lower their income, they're expensive, they'll have to do something different. And if that's what you guys want to do, that's what's going to happen. I mean, it's just going to happen. But I think for me, Gretchen, I'd rather have you in the meeting we had, say, hey, you know, let's talk about why we do this. I've been doing this for a long time, I get up in the middle of the night a lot to come to City Meadville and help us, what we always do when we're busy, so I certainly, I certainly care about what we do, I've always have, but at the end of the day, this is just, it's just been a tough last couple of years in EMS, it's been tougher for everybody. Sorry, I probably didn't answer your question yourself.
No, you did.
So at the end of the day, I suspect everybody in this room agrees that we want to provide the best ambulance service possible for the greatest number of people possible, at little if no impact upon beleaguered property taxpayers who are paying 100% of the bill with 55% of the base. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
How do we do this, and why is it being, why is this coming to the forefront so quickly? I mean, we have budgets and everything else, every municipality does, but something that ought to be taking a year to discuss, investigate, true numbers.
You're right.
All of a sudden, it's becoming an issue in late December of this year.
It's not. The problem is, our first GIS study through the IFF saying that an ambulance should be put in the city was in 2011, and it has been approached that we have tried to slowly do that to see that it's there. Our forefront from the people that I currently work with and those that retired above me and put countless hours into it, saw what the writing on the wall was for the EMS crisis. It's now coming to the forefront because now we're talking about all these places getting a half mil. We hear the one and a half put out at something else, and so when does that become the burden that becomes on the taxpayers? That if we don't step up and do something, when is it a one and a half or a half mil or whatever? Whatever fee base that county or state or anything else sets up, that comes onto our taxpayers. And so how can we jump out ahead of that to reduce any financial impact to them while still making sure that they have that high level of care? You know, because that, again, not trying to call out, spade's a spade, one's operating, trying to do what they can and make sure it's in within this profit system, where ours is a profit, ours is covering expenses. And I think that's where it's kind of key with that too, is that by having that, by our guys stepping up and offering to go ahead and cross-staff on the ambulance, I mean, I could tell you, not a whole lot of places are saying, hey, add more work to me, I will go do this, I'll gladly do it, while requesting no additional compensation, just because they want to make sure that things are covered and to keep our expenses low, so we're not doing that.
Wouldn't this, however we proceed, wouldn't it be more effective, more cost-effective, more professionally effective if it were done on a regional basis rather than separate municipalities? I mean, we have at least three fire departments here, across the creek, here, and on the other side of the city line. So we have three fire departments, and we could have one or two ambulance services, and still people would be left without coverage. How do we handle that?
I mean, that's a, that's the age-old question of getting anyone to agree in municipalities. I mean, without calling out, that's where it is. Is municipalities would have to come together and make that agreement and how would the cost-sharing part of it? And that's where the hard part is. I don't have a solution to that, but that's where, what can I do to help Meadville? Ultimately, yeah, I want to help what we can everywhere. And ideally, if you could have a regional approach that creates that and adds more units, absolutely. But trying to do that right now and trying to combat what our potential tax burden could be, you know, that's where, what is best, that's the long-term of work for it. And I believe what Mr. Henry's talking about, the EMS commission, works towards that regional approach. And that is what they're working on, but that is a long-term of stuff.
And I can add, I appreciate that. So the EMS commission, one of the ideas, the EMS commission is a county-wide regional EMS approach and EMS authority. I've talked to Miriam about this. And, you know, EMS authority on a county-wide level, with the proper assistance from some of our legislators and our discussions, you can create, you can create revenue streams by household, not just by a border or a street or a line. And so the ability to create an authority is similar to a water or sewer authority, which, you know, similarly, some municipalities would understand because they have that now. That EMS authority is in operation in multiple other parts of Pennsylvania. It actually works good. Multiple municipalities regionalize EMS. And at the end of the day, there is a group, just like your water and sewer authority. You appoint people to that authority, they have a meeting every month, and their whole purpose is not water or sewer, it's EMS. And the key to that is, is you do have buy-in from West Mead and Vernon and other municipalities out there who still require EMS. That really is the ultimate goal. And I think that that's a discussion that needs to happen because that's the way the EMS commission is kind of flowing. And the revenue stream itself, again, I hate to tell everybody, the half a mil is just a drop in the bucket. A brand-new ambulance, you know, fully equipped is $300,000. That's more than what a half a mil in my 22 municipalities are. It just, I mean, it's what it is. And so I think that that is really what happens. And I can appreciate Gretchen for her, the passion for the city. But at the end of the day, and I think these guys can attest, I mean, there are a lot of times the city handles services that they have to because of the size of city you are compared to the people around you. And it's burdensome to taxpayers and it's burdensome to people. And this EMS authority, this EMS idea is really the, to me, is the way to go in the future. It doesn't involve, and I'm a private ambulance service, I've owned it 20 years. I don't think that the correct model is a private ambulance service. I mean, I'd be the first to tell you. I think the correct model is an EMS authority. An EMS authority would be able to have that regional approach. If the alternative would be, and Evan, I've had this talk about a lot of different things, but the alternative would be for regional approaches is to get those municipalities to regionalize with you. And I think that we all know in the room, that's a difficult task and may not be something you would see anywhere in the near future.
Evan, would you be thinking about?
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but we're going to give five more minutes for council comments before we switch to the public.
Would you consider, think about handling interfacility transports under your model?
Personally, no. That our goal is for the emergency care of it. That we're set to try to make them and take someone to the hospital in that time of need. You know, I believe Mr. Henry probably does make some money off of that. Again, we're not trying to take anything more from that. We're trying to make sure the citizens, when they call 911, whether it's for lithocysts, whether it's for toe pain, whether it's for cardiac arrest, have the care and treatment that they need and are able to get to the, get to the hospital, have the ambulance respond there and make sure that that's done. And provide that service. Because as it's been reiterated over and over that it's the municipality's responsibility to make sure that's there, how can we make sure that's there? How can we make sure that that is covered and that they do have access to the emergency care? You know, it's not the municipality's job or function to provide the interfacility transport, at least any law or statute that I've read. And so to make sure that they have what we need to as that service to get them there.
Is there any further questions or comments from council?
I just, real quick, Evan, I know, I've heard this and Eric, I know that you said four minutes, right? With 80% of Meadville in four minutes. And I think that we talked about someone with a cardiac issue, right? Needing that, right, four minutes. And without an ambulance service here and you have someone with a cardiac issue, right? Let's say I'm having a heart attack at my house. And if the ambulance is more than that out, right? What are my chances of surviving?
I mean, they go dead, we can pull up, I have somewhere in the statistics here, it was done in our GIS study in 2011. But average overall cardiac arrest survival is like 9% overall. It is very poor. But as we start talking about early advanced-level intervention, being able to get there and provide that ALS quickly, that's where that goes up. And so making sure that we can do that. And there is currently, most times, you're right, that that is there. But it's when it's not. How can we make sure it is there? That when it's saying that there is not an ambulance on this one because we didn't have enough staffing or have enough people, why is, you know, Mrs. Johnson less than Mrs. Smith? Because we weren't able to have it and our system was overwhelmed? If we have the functions in place and the ability to provide advanced-level care within the city of Meadville, that might not ever be the question. That know that that's there, know that we have that. Give those additional resources, units, give us the ability to have the additional ALS care on our squad, that we might be able to stop that. You might never be able to stop that. But if the system is that overwhelmed, and it is that much that there's ambulances going to the north, ambulances going to the south, and we're starting to figure out how we're going to rely somewhere in the middle, that how can we make sure that that doesn't go left?
Right. So just saying at least being available, right?
Something, something for our city.
That's not going to be the reason I pass is not having the ambulance there. It's just going to be, okay. Thank you, Evan.
If there are no further questions from council, we can move on to public comment. So I'll go first with Todd Schoonover.
Hi, I'm Todd Schoonover. I'm a Meadville resident and I also am a paramedic. I served multiple terms on the EMSOP committee for the Department of Health, which provides grants to ambulance companies on an annual basis. I was board directors for Cattersport Ambulance in Potter County, which has a call volume of 1,500 calls a year, provides ALS coverage for all of Potter County, not just Cattersport. And I'm also working for Potter, for Port Allegheny Ambulance, which has a call volume of 700 calls a year and covers one-third of McKean County. Cattersport Ambulance and Port Allegheny Ambulance both have reached out and have started getting millage, the .5, because of the shortfalls that we have as service providers. That .5% is a huge difference in our annual budget, allowing us to pay our providers to buy new equipment. Evan, I know you have indicated that you see revenue coming in for running ambulance calls. A BLS, basic life support ambulance call, Medicaid payment, $180 currently in Pennsylvania. For ALS, it's $300. If it is cardiac arrest, the number-one drug that we use for cardiac arrest is epinephrine. One dose of epinephrine currently today costs $138. We normally use at least three doses of epinephrine on cardiac arrest. Three doses is more than the Medicaid payment. You are not going to fund four new employees through running emergency calls when drug prices are increasing. There's another medication, glupigone, okay? Used to be $90 for a single dose. Today, it's $283 for a dose. And that's rescue medication given to someone who is diabetic and their blood sugar is low. I came tonight to address council and encourage you to do the .5 millage. As a property owner, yes, that's going to be more taxes on me. But I truly believe that ambulance services need that support. Fire departments get more millage than that. As city council, what is your main concern? The people who live in this town or the property? So I would fund the people. If that means taking the .5 away from the fire department to give to the ambulance service, I would encourage you to do that. If you don't, if you don't want to go and raise rates, taxes. Thank you.
And thank you for being here with that. You're right, medication is expensive. And I think though, that one thing that we both see and both know is that our hospital, we have been able to replace those medications. I mean, that has happened all the way from when I did work as a medic for Mr. Henry back in the day. It's the same thing that we do with our current medications that we have. I believe most other ambulance services, including fire departments that are sitting here that run ALS, in our region anyway, are getting those medications replaced because they are able to bill for other, and more services in that way. And so the medication cost, although that is something there, it's not something that we are seeing really in this area, and at least from the services that we've talked to, that we've had, that I've been a part of. And so to see that, and if we're talking about saying that we need a half mil for EMS, okay, and you're taking that from fire, but what if one service was able to provide both with almost no cost, that we're saying we can do it with no fee? But if you're saying that there is, you know, because again, I understand that yours is operating with both staff, we're offering to cross-staff and put that on. But if we're having that operation be there and we can have all of it being one to handle those emergencies, you know, and do all of that together without having to take away from any, then, you know, that's where our proposal comes into that.
Anything to add, Mr. Henry?
No, I think most, Evan said it was true. I mean, it's better.
So moving on, Darren Hall.
Thank you. The big problem with EMS right now is manpower. If you Google EMS manpower on Google, you find a bunch of articles where all the EMS people are getting together, the volunteer fire departments are getting together. They do not have the EMTs nor the paramedics. You know what? I worked for the fire department for 20 years. Eric, you did a great job. You know, his paramedics or his professional, the EMTs, and it's not his fault that people are not taking EMT class. People are not renewing their EMT or paramedic. I have statistics here that show how many paramedics and EMTs didn't renew last year. And it's a lot, it's a big percentage. Am I correct, Eric?
Absolutely.
And that's the problem. He is losing manpower. Okay? And when you lose manpower and you don't run enough calls, you know, it does put a financial burden on you. How many municipalities do you cover, Eric?
22, sir.
22, right. So let's say you do an average of $42,000, which you quoted West Mead or whatever.
It's about, it's about $275.
For the taxes?
Yeah.
Overall, like about $42,000 a year, times the 22. I mean, you're looking at almost a million dollars of revenue you're getting from the municipalities.
It's $275,000. Some municipalities we cover is $840. Some is.
Correct, because of the, because of the house.
It's millage, it's assessed.
Correct, it's millage based off your property value.
Just for clarification.
Right. So, you know, and yes, back in the heyday, you could bill and you got what you got, you know? And Medicare has cut that. But council has to remember, you're here for the citizens of Meadville. And when it comes down to mutual aid, if you're licensed through the state and you are called for backup, you're obligated to show up, correct? If you're licensed by the state as an ambulance service, and let's say our rig's busy at a call and they call you, you're still obligated to come under the law.
No, you can opt out municipalities with, it's actually in the actual law. That's actually a Warren Fire Department discussion, that Warren is here, they know this. They can provide you with a letter that will clearly tell you, you don't have to do that actually, no, at all.
Okay.
So, I appreciate that.
You have mutual aid agreements. And you know, Jim, you talked about regionalization. You know, we talked about that a long time ago with fire departments. It'll never work. You know, each fire department has their own identity. And I think ambulance services, if you're going to start an ambulance service, you're going to do the same thing. Municipalities start their own ambulance service and not have him part of it. It's going to be the regional service supported by the municipalities, not Meadville Ambulance. Correct? Okay. So, and you know, numbers scare people. But, you know, you're here to, you know, provide care for the citizens of Meadville. And, you know, if you gotta, if you do mutual aid with everybody else and Eric did a call in West Mead and they can't run a rig there, they're going to call you, you know, take up the next call, you know? We're here to take care of people. So don't let numbers scare you. Yeah, brand-new rig, all decked out, yeah, that's going to cost you a lot of money. Your upfront cost is going to cost you. But as a career fire department, when you provide, when you create new services for that department, there's a lot of different grants you can apply for and get and bring a lot of that money back in to recoup of your starting cost. You have people in fire department, they're grant writers. You know, and every time we used to file for grants, you know, did you start a new service? Did you start this? No, because we just do this. So there's a lot of money out there to get recouped. You know, you have to get recouped on all of it. And who cares if we break even on EMS? You're not raising taxes. Right? And if it don't work out and we're able to recoup our money, you know, look later on. So, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I responded there, but thank you, Darren. I appreciate you saying that because we're, I think we're friends. And I think that we are. I think that people in this union, you guys are, you really are friends of mine and I have changed your air packs and you have lifted my patience down steps. And so I appreciate you taking a good approach because that's the approach we all should take together. At the end of the day, I only disagree on this. You know, as an elected county commissioner, numbers actually do matter. And the reason why I say numbers is not to scare Gretchen or anybody else. I want you to see it. So you know that when you look at structural deficits of, you know, six and eight mils next year, that you understand, when you step foot into the ambulance ring, you're talking about a lot higher taxes. And I know Evan will tell you it breaks even. I think it's important for you to all look at it. And I think that maybe Evan and I need to do it together. So it's a fair process to see where your numbers come from, where our numbers come from. But numbers, numbers do matter. I don't reside in the city of Meadville, but the people who do reside in the city of Meadville probably care about numbers. And they want to make sure that at the end of the day, that they have, they have their houses still and they can afford their houses. And get me, don't get me wrong, I like your idea. I think the EMS model of regionalization is probably the way to go. It's not, I can tell you right now, 20-plus years of your own ambulance service, it's, trust me, it is not a for-profit business that people want to endure. It's a painful, difficult business. So I think the answer is something like that, especially with emergencies. And then you have services who would probably like to do transports. And I agree with Evan. Jim, just for your record, it really shouldn't be, interfacility shouldn't be part of Meadville Fire Department's model. That would be a mistake, I mean, it would be bad, so. But thank you, thank you, Darren.
Yeah, no problem.
Anything to add, Mr. Verosh?
No, I mean, I think you're absolutely right that it is how we can provide that and knowing that it works within our system, and maybe it is sitting down and looking at the numbers, but all the numbers that we have had, all the places that we've looked at, knowing our average per-call revenue of what's there, that yes, they don't look great. But it covers what our cost would be for our Ford. And that's what our whole approach is, is how can we provide that next level up? Get that transportable unit in there, making sure that we're operating within our current system to add that. You know, that's where our kind of goal sits and lies.
Moving on, Jane Smith. Do you have anything to ask?
I don't think she heard you.
Jane? Jane, do you have anything to ask?
No, thanks.
Okay. Carlin Gingrich?
Yes. Yes, I am a resident of the city. I own a house a couple blocks down the street. I'd like to say that I would be in support of this proposal to get an ambulance and additional staffing in Meadville Fire Department. I see and hear and hear about our firemen in the city responding to a lot of medical calls. And I understand that they are responding with their fire truck and limited medical equipment and doing the best that they can, you know, to assist whatever the case. I would see a great benefit in giving them the proper equipment and the proper staffing to care for the citizens in the city when they respond. I appreciate that the attempt to provide them with staffing and with equipment is being made also to do that in a way that funds the department with the revenue that comes from the service provided. So yes, I would like to see that happen.
And that is all that have signed up. Is there anybody up?
My name is Jim Aldrich. I've been a firefighter in the city of Meadville for 20 years. I do reside in the city. I'd like to address, first of all, regionalization. Not to be rude to this council, because this council wasn't involved. But Vernon in the city couldn't even agree on how to clear the sidewalk on Smoth Bridge. Do you think they're going to be able to regionalize an ambulance? Okay? Second of all, the reason we're here today is because in 2008, we had an early intervention report. In the early intervention report, it was said that we should have a fire-based EMS system. Okay? Those are experts. In 2011, there was an EMS emergency. Yeah, that's how long we've been dealing with this. Okay, so there was an EMS emergency. So Meadville Fire Department went around to Warren, to Bradford. By the way, this isn't rocket science. They've been doing it since the 80s, Warren has. Bradford's been doing it since. Bradford's been doing it since probably as long.
Yeah.
Okay? So, if you want to see a model, you can see the model. So, in 2011, we approached council. So, I walked in with Tim Groves tonight and I said, "Groundhog Day, here we are again." Okay? So, that council was on board for a long time. And then, they had a meeting with Eric Henry and it got squashed.
Jimmy, in 2011, I mean? I never had a meeting at 2011.
I'm not sure the date.
Okay.
So, anyway, here we are now in 2022. We still have the EMS emergency. So, we're asking you to take action. I appreciate the time.
So, thanks Jimmy for the comments. Jimmy's been a fireman for a long time and does, I think he's been through all the EMS emergencies, I believe, right, Jimmy? Were you here for the start of QRS?
No.
Not that old, okay. You're not chief speaker level, right?
That's older than me.
Older than you, even. I apologize, Darren, for that. I thought Jimmy was close, but I was only 20 years old.
He's a young one.
Okay.
Is there any other comments or, go ahead? And could you state your name just for her?
My name's Andrew Moore. I'm a district service rep for the Pennsylvania Professional Firefighters. I represent the locals Newcastle to Bradford, Meadville, Erie, et cetera. I was taking notes tonight. And one of the things that we talk about is, and Mr. Henry is absolutely correct on, is EMS-based models are not very profitable, if at all profitable. Fire-based EMS is a different animal. It's literally apples and oranges. And Warren, what we do is, we actually have two BLS ambulances and we work with our mutual aid neighbors and with Emergent Care as our ALS provider. If we have a structured fire, then they come and help us. And conversely, if they have a structured fire and they need help, just like the city of Meadville does now, they go and help them. One of the big things is, is the timely care for patients. I believe you said something about a cardiac arrest. Cardiac arrest is, everybody, is what everybody kind of goes to, but it's kind of a bad one because best care in the world is pretty low survivability, unfortunately. There are times when that timely showing up, taking care of them and getting them to more advanced care makes all the difference in the world. A more accurate way of looking at it is, is if a child has blocked airway or an adult has a blocked airway, we show up, we try to do the different things that we can do and that the paramedics can do, which is even more than what a BLS ambulance can do. If we can't get that airway cleared, we have very limited time before we start doing irreparable damage to the patient. That was where we got to get to the hospital. There's many instances where I've seen through the years where simple industrial accidents, somebody gets man versus machine. Sorry for the sexist thing. But, man versus machine, somebody gets a hand crushed, foot crushed, burn injuries, scald injuries, poisonings, any number of those, the clock is ticking. And you never know how long it is before the dispatcher gets the call and sends it on down the road. So, one of the things is, is, you know, if they can get to 80% of the town within four minutes, that's a huge, huge, huge plus. One of the things you think about in municipal budgeting is I'm buying something, what am I paying for? If you're buying a street sweeper, you pay the money for a street sweeper so you don't have to buy a vac truck to clean out the storm drains so the streets don't flood. But, you don't see any money come back off of that. You buy a piece of fire equipment that puts out house fires, it protects industries, but you don't necessarily see any money come back from that. But, one thing with fire-based EMS, for the most part, the majority of the personnel are there. And they're already responding to those calls. And you will get some money back. Will not cover everything. I agree with Mr. Henry. The billing and all that is for another time and another location to talk to your elective officials, higher up the food chain. But, for the time being, while people work towards possibly regional plans is to take care of the immediate situation. It appears to me, with, I've been in the service for over 27 years, that the men and women of the Meadville Fire Department are prepared to go to work if you had the equipment for them. And once the licensure by some miracle came down from on high, they could go to work tomorrow, providing care. They'd be able to back up surrounding townships. The other one I like to do is figure, if you have a car accident, somebody's coming down the hill from the fairgrounds. And I can't imagine what that hill's like when you guys get freezing rain and stuff. But, let's say it's Sunday morning, they're going to church. Vehicle rolls over. We always see the church vans that are notorious for accidents. You have a rollover accident. Meadville can't plan for every eventual case that could come before them. We've had two tornadoes come through Warren in the last 10 years. Never thought I'd ever literally see the day. You do with what you, the best you can, but it's impossible for a town this size, a city this size, to be able to afford to plan for every eventuality. But, the brothers from Titusville, Oil City, Warren, Meadville, we talk to each other and we all kind of bounce ideas off of each other. And the government does as well. They all talk to each other. The managers talk and mayors talk and stuff. This is something that's worked in Warren. It's been a huge asset in McKean County. But, we also work with our partners in those counties to help the outlying areas. There's plenty of funding models. Some of you folks may be aware of some of the funding models that they've implemented down in Mercer County, Greenville. Look into that. There's ways of you folks recouping costs that would not necessarily result in tax increases. Thank you.
Can I ask them one question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore, you said it was?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me the city revenue for EMS was last year, 2022?
2022's numbers won't be ready until...
I'm sorry, this is 2021, I apologize.
Yes. I'd have to defer that question to Chief Krogler, who came down here with me.
375, 244, 25? December?
375. We budgeted 350 for this year. We're probably on pace to make it 375.
Appreciate that, chief. And would you also, your budget, the Warren Fire budget is $3.2 million?
$2.9.
$2.9. This is the 2021, that's why, okay? Meadville Fire Department, your budget's what, what is it? $1.6?
$1.6.
Okay. I was just checking to see the two services. How many guys do you have on a shift every time?
Currently, we're operating at seven, but we go down as low as six.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Last call, any other, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
Jill Staff, Meadville Fire Department. I've been on for about 18 years now. Eric has been nice enough with the commissioners to get us a grant that we were able to send some people to paramedic class. I've also had the opportunity, because of the paramedic class, now to sit down at Eric's business and run with those guys down there. They currently have five medics that are covering the city of Meadville and all the other municipalities that he covers. Five, four every day. Which means there are two working today, two working tomorrow, and one next day. Someone else is going to be working overtime to cover them. There is a shortage of medics. So, Eric is in a position, we're covering all that is not it possible, but it's not on a good day. Today was a great example. I had the privilege of riding with them for seven hours today. We ran, Eric, I don't know, nine calls in three hours. He doesn't have the medics to cover that. The majority of them fell with Eric's crew going and the city of Meadville going. So, if we could, between the two groups, provide coverage where Eric was actually sending his guys to Westmead and allowing Meadville to cover Meadville as the primary and handling those, it would free him up to be able to run the other calls. At points in time, he had to, due to manpower shortages, it's not his fault or anyone else's, delay care to someone outside the city. We had our guys already on scene. If those guys were trained to do the ALS portion, which we are working on, we have two currently enrolled in the class. We have three on staff that can cover some of those calls that just have to get commanding back. We would not only help his system, we would help our system as well. So, when they talked about, Mr. Roa asked about Glenwood Avenue. You're right, Mr. Roa, we may not cover both sides of Glenwood, but if we were covering one side of Glenwood, then Mr. Henry's service could cover the other side easier by having two crews, one on each side, if we had the manpower to do that. I think looking at the city providing that service for the city not only helps the citizens of Meadville because there are days when Eric is also in Sager Town and Vernon. There's his two crews. Who's covering the city then? You know, we're calling on other people to come in and help us. We have to, we cannot transport at this time. So, it's going to help both sections, outside the city and inside the city, by providing coverage from the Meadville Fire Department. I think it's a great option to look into. It may cost us for a year or two, but in the long run, I would rather pay a little extra and have those people, have the service provided to the citizens, both in the city and outside of the city, than say, hey, we didn't spend an extra couple bucks and we're not providing a service and somebody's waiting an hour and a half for a service.
Can I respond to Jill, please? Would you want to first or you?
No, I mean, the first I'll put is Captain Staff, absolutely. Thank you for going with paramedic school. 18 years in, you're technically close to retirement and yet that is... I was trying to give you the benefit of the doubt about it. Close to your 20, I was trying to, I'm just glad you went first. No, I'm close to the 20-year mark. Then, you know, you're captain, you're sitting there and yet you are taking that initiative to try to provide that care to our citizens. The same thing that every one of us is trying to do and that we have had overwhelming support of, how can we get an advanced EMT class in here? How can we send more people to paramedic school? That that is what you are getting from the Meadville Fire Department, the Meadville firefighters, is what more we can do. She has enough on her plate and yet here she is on her off day, making sure she's riding and doing that to serve that level. So, thank you, just deserve a part for there.
Thank you. Jill, I'm going to tell you that you're the smartest person in the room. And the reason, and the reason why I say this is simple. Chief and Warren, do you get along with Emergent Care?
Yeah.
You work great, pretty much, for the most part. I know Dave and Todd, you know, don't worry about Todd. Don't make it sound like Todd. But, the Dave...
Todd, he's been my...
I know he did. But, at the end of the day, I think what I would ask for as a 20-year provider of service since 1958, that we hammer out something that works together. If it includes an ambulance that works, I'm all for it. If you want to run an ambulance, I'm all for it. But, what you don't want to do is if you want, if you want to be the ambulance, I think everybody in this room knows you will lose money. If you're the only ambulance running three calls, Jill is exactly right. But, my point is, as a private business owner who has tried to make ends meet, is if you want my support, I'll gladly support you. But, at the end of the day, I can't cut my own throat. And so, that's all I've ever said to anybody was, let's sit and talk about it. Evan is a very intelligent individual. He actually worked for me before. I have a lot of respect for him. I have a lot of respect for the family in this room. I think there's a viable option that works. And I think it's a matter of us all sitting down together and figuring it out. If it's an ambulance that works, then we do a joint venture and it's your ambulance and you run it, I'm fine with it. But, at the end of the day, if the whole goal is to take over the ambulance process, you will be shorter than you are today. Because we do cover 98% of the calls with five paramedics. And we do have three people in class because of that same purpose. And when Chief Wiley called and said, hey, I got two people that want to take paramedic class, my first question was, are they nuts? And then, he said who it was and I was like, yeah, they're probably okay. And I was appreciative that they both got in there. It is amazing because paramedic class is very difficult. And, you know, God bless Jill and Tyler for both taking it. And every day, I always ask the instructor, I email him, is everybody still in? Is everybody still in? Because I want to know. It's important. We've invested, we've invested $150,000 into that paramedic program. And I think that that's important. So, I frankly think that that is the answer, is to find something that we both can work through and make it function and survive together. And I'm fine with it. And always have been.
Is there any other public comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Lieutenant James Brown, the City District Fire Department. Just so, no, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the city. This is just a firefighter. City of Titusville did purchase an ambulance, as you guys, I'm guessing everybody else has heard of it by now. We are working on getting our BLS staff, licensure, everything. As of right now, we are looking wherever, to add a third guy per shift start of the new year so that we can run the ambulance calls. As of right now, the model's looking like if we are waiting on an ambulance because we don't have one in town, that ambulance will take that call to provide the level of care that's needed. Because as Eric said before, right now, we're waiting upwards of an hour, a little over an hour for ambulance out of Oil City or Franklin sometimes to come up and assist us because of volunteer services tax. The... Is there talks, take a primary BLS care? I mean, there has been discussions of it. Maybe not right now, but down the road, that could be a possibility. Just keep in mind that we're not here to make money. Fire Department already costs the city money. We're just here to provide that next level of care. If there's revenue that is involved that, it'd be great to help with that system. There is no agreement that between Emergent Care and us to run together. This was in a separate entity from Emergent Care. This is the city's truck. They wanted, we tried to do a joint effort. They wanted us to provide a third guy per shift, which would be doing anyway with this ambulance. And to cover some of their losses, which was going to cost us an extreme amount of money. So, we decided, you know what, let's go at this ourselves. And I foresee it working out very well in the future once we do get it up and running. But, I just left that in there.
I would like to ask Lieutenant Brown first. Thank you for being here. Second, how long have you kind of been in the Titusville area?
I got hired in the city of Titusville in 2015.
And you've kind of moved that, that direction kind of started, grew up there?
Yeah, I grew up, I started in the fire service in Townville. When I was 16 years old, started in the ambulance service and got an EMT and everything.
Has there always been that struggle with Emergent Care? Or has it progressively gotten worse?
It's progressively gotten worse. Since I've been hired there, it is, and I get to see it firsthand. It has drastically gotten worse. I mean, the wait times are just, I mean, there's only so many conversations you can have in somebody's living room. How you doing? With being a BLS provider.
I think Jimmy, also, I think you attest that you're in a completely different, I think Jimmy, also, I think you attest that you're in a completely different, it's talk about apples and oranges, the city of Titusville, and you know how much time we've put into this with Neil and working through it. They do wait 90 minutes for ambulance at times. That's not the case here for us, we certainly have the issues. So I appreciate Jimmy coming, because even as a county commissioner, I think that's a scary thing, like no one should ever wait 90 minutes for an ambulance. I don't care who we are, so. And I appreciate you guys doing what you're doing.
And you're right, and that is my concern, is that, and I guess the point that I'm trying to make with that is, it never was a concern for Titusville, but based on the limited number of providers, the areas they have to cover, the continuous lack of volunteer providers that used to be relied on, that service having to go outward, that it is now waiting 60 and 90 minutes. And I hope that never happens, but I don't want to sit back here and say that it did and then try to maintain that I did everything that I could.
Any further comments or questions?
I'd like to make just a quick couple comments to counsel, pretty much at this point in time. I am Sam McSparron. I do work for the city of Oil City. I'm the local 700 president. This is your guys' decision. And it's not one to take lightly. And I understand that I've been through several contract negotiations with our city, our current city manager. We've had some rough goes. We're actually in a really good spot with us right now. But one thing I'd like to tell you guys, with your staff going through paramedic school, or being paramedics already, it figured, excuse me, it costs anywhere of our city $20,000 to $30,000 per person to send them, on duty. With the city paying for that service, you guys have probably already been through that, through Chief Wiley. And of course, there was a grant I heard about. But we've just put two guys through it, and it does cost money. We run a QRS squad and a QRS engine that are ALS-staffed, paramedic-staffed. Like I said, your decision is a huge one you're going to have to take. But no matter what decision you do make, I believe it's time that you let the fire department become ALS-certified and provide that service to your city. Whether it's on an engine, a squad, an ambulance. Let them back the ambulance up. We work hand-in-hand with community. Andy, who I talk with a lot, said to look at Bradford and Warren, they have something that works up there. If you guys were ever interested in looking into our system, you'd be more than welcome. Actually, Evan works part-time for us, so he knows it quite well. I don't know if that's the way you guys would ever think about going. But like I said, in a cardiac arrest, Oil City, we have two stations, of course. We can be on scene within two to three minutes upon dispatch. So it does mean a lot in the aspect of life-saving. I don't mean to take all your time tonight, as we know we have lives out of here, but it's definitely good to have a working relationship with your ambulance service. We go, we have our differences down home, and I don't know anything about the city of Meadville, and this is the way I get to Erie. So, but I do want to tell you, it is great work what they're doing, putting people through paramedic staff or having them on the roster. And you should look into letting them do their work. And that's all I have, unless these guys have any questions for me or anything.
No, I just, I want to reiterate that, yes, no matter what direction that council goes with, that our working relationship between the ambulance will always be that. Our professionalism, our ability to take care of the patient, whether it's myself, whether it's the fire department, whether it's Eric, whether it's Meadville ambulance, that there is no difference as far as that, that the patient care, while we're there, we were dispatched to that emergency, has been and will always be top and primary focus. And so I do thank you for putting that on.
Actually, excellent input, other than your fire chief's a little suspect, but we'll be okay.
It wasn't an elected position.
I just have one thing to go on that about the training. Right now, the city of Meadville Fire Department, when you apply to be a firefighter, you already have to have a certain level of training. And you already have to have your EMT. So that's training that the city of Meadville does not have to pay for, for an incoming firefighter. And you would create the same for a paramedic. For a paramedic to already have certain certifications before they can apply for a position within the fire department. Because that saves a lot of money. And it saves a lot of time. Because if you hire somebody and they're not trained, well, guess what? That person ain't going to be used for how long until a paramedic class starts or what. So a long time ago, when Chief Hendrick was here, they created all those standards. So the city wouldn't be paying out to save money for the city. We're not paying for all this training. That way, if they come in, they work for three years and they don't like it and they leave, guess what? We didn't pay for any of their training. We paid for Con Ed and everything like that, but we didn't fork out money for all the training. And it has saved the city a lot of money over the years. Thank you.
Any other public comments or questions? Hearing that, I'll open it up to any final thoughts. Mr. Kardas, if you want to go first.
Again, thank you all for being here this evening. It's not anything easy to talk about. It's not anything that anyone wants to talk about, but unfortunately, if we don't start talking about it and addressing it, I don't want us to be sitting in the same sort of situation in a year of, why did something not happen? Why was there not the foresight to do that? Again, I would ask any council, if they have any questions, to come to us, and we're gladly to do what we can to open things up and to have that and make that decision moving forward, whatever it may be. And then we'll support it. You know, we're here for the city, we work for the city. And so whatever decisions are there is that we support to make sure that it's done that way. And we want to make sure that whatever we can do to help provide that higher level of care, to try to make sure that gets through. So again, thank you for your time, thank you for opening it up this way so we can have this back and forth, and yeah, that's about it.
Mr. Hendrick?
Autumn, first of all, I know you appreciate town halls, but could you somehow control the temperature below 84 degrees? I appreciate that. So I'm going to, I'm going to take my hat off for one second, and I normally don't do this, but I am a first-term county commissioner, I do care about the city of Meadville, and I care about the residents of this county. And Mr. Brown said that I sold an ambulance very quickly, because that's what they wanted, they needed to do. I used to work for Titusville Hospital EMS, and so in those days, there wasn't an ambulance problem. It was, I think, one of the best services that there ever was in the west region at the time. Those things have changed. And so I think for me is, and Gretchen, I can appreciate the heart and passion, the fire department, they have a great heart and great passion. But on the other side, my biggest thing is, I think we have the ability to do what Warren does. I think we have the ability to find some kind of, no matter what it looks like. I'm a fixer, I try to fix things. I've been in the ambulance service for 20 years. I think Evan has some good ideas. I would ask that the union guys sit down and say, let's figure out a path forward to get to where we want to be. And I think that I know where you want to be, and I think I know where you want to be. And I'm 52, so I kind of know where I want to be eventually, but, you know, Jill is right. The other concern that I, and I'll share this with you for everyone. I look at everything with a 10-year snapshot. So if you belong to a volunteer fire service, look at a 10-year snapshot and tell me what you see. You know, look at your community you live in and tell me what you see. I do the same thing at Cropper County. Evan is a young guy, and I can appreciate that, because that's important in EMS. Jill was right. The people who she rode with today, probably 55, 52, 57, 51. I mean, we're old guys, we've been doing it for a long time. And I think the time is now to find a solution, because we have to find something that works for everyone and to get to that point. If we don't, we're going to age ourselves out and we're not going to have any paramedics. And I think Jill will tell you, my people do work hard and they are on, they are moving people a lot. And sometimes care does get compromised, because you have to go to the next call, if someone's waiting for the- such a wonderful- You're not going to respond to Warren from here, it's a- But at the end of the day, I think that we need to sit down, Evan and I need to fix this and find a way forward that works for the city, that doesn't cost the city a bunch of money, that doesn't cost the Meadville Ambulance Service employees who have jobs to do in other aspects, which we might be able to do. And, you know, if that ends up you being an ambulance provider, I'm okay with that. But that sounds like something we can work on. So I think that's a big step for a private ambulance service, say, because, Jimmy, I don't remember what meeting it was, I always walked in and handed keys to ambulances and no one ever took them back then. Maybe it was at the Spiel, right? So I think that that's something we could do and make some kind of partnership that works. And I'm fine with that. I just think at the end of the day, the approach needs to be that way. It needs to be a task force, whatever you want, whatever you guys use in your guys' terms, to sit down, the mayor could be involved, the city council, sit in one big room and say, here's what your goal is, here's what our goals, and let's get there, whatever it is. I'm fine with that. If that works for everybody else. But I do appreciate everybody talking.
With that, thank you everybody for coming out tonight. This concludes the town hall. Please be safe on your way home.